Episode number 127 with Steve and Mike. Welcome to the Heads Up Poker Podcast. This is Steve Barton.
And this is Mike, temporarily, till I go back to sleep.
How was, how was your session last night?
Well, it was till, it was, this was an old school one, Steve. I didn't get home till about 7:00 AM.
Oh, nice. Wow. So have you gone to sleep yet?
Oh, nice. Um, yeah, I slept for like a two and a half hours or whatever it is. So.
Okay, okay. How'd your session go?
It was a bad, it was really bad. This was, this was old school, staying all night. Although I think I can look at my game pretty harshly and pretty honestly, and I played well. It was just one of those miserable nights. It's like I had the dream table kind of shorthanded for a while with, you know, in my mind, inferior players and you know, just getting, they're just the type that'd call every three bet and then, and then fold if they didn't hit it, but they're hitting it every time.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, there's one guy who was driving me absolute nuts. He would, he'd get down to like 100 bucks, then he'd double them up and double up again. And he would just kept, that was his thing. He would just, you know, like limp shove, or if somebody makes it 30, somebody makes it 30, then he'd, he always had like a shove stack between like 100 and, you know, 600. So finally, uh, somebody limps, he makes it like 30, and I make it 95 with ace, king suited, and he snap shoves. It turns out he had king jack suited and, um, he won like a $1,300 pot. So it was that kind of night. Could have been worse, I guess. I don't know. I was into the game for $4,900.
Oh, wow.
Cashed off for 2,200. So these guys finally quit the game. There was a couple of people who kind of cashed out and got out of there. Oh, I gotta go to work today, kind of thing. I felt otherwise I could have clawed my way back, but, um.
Well, so they played all night and then they go to work?
That's what, that's what two guys were claiming. I don't know. I mean, these were just hardcore DJs. Yeah, I almost, uh, I don't think I was talking to you. I think I was talking about Alex about it. And this was like 10 days ago at a heater and he's like, well, you really sit for Vegas. And I'm like, I think I might just play two, three or grind online to preserve that Vegas roll. And do I need to say that I've just had a miserable week and a half here?
What, uh, what are you playing? Are you playing two, three? Or are you playing two, five, or five, 10, or five, five?
This was, this was five, five, the last few days where I've gotten, gotten it in the rear. And it could have been even worse, but, um, I don't know. I guess I've been at this long enough that I should like should shrug it off.
What, uh, are they still running your two, five that you started up at the casino?
No, not really. I mean, it ran once, I guess, last week without me there, which is a good sign. I make sure it's on the board every day and put my name on there.
Yeah.
But, um, I haven't really been hustling for it the last few weeks because I'm getting ready to go to Vegas. So, you know.
Yeah. I, uh, I was online, uh, all day yesterday. I put in about the 2,000 hands. And I was looking at my overall stats and in the, in the last six months, I put in 50,000 hands. Uh, my BBs per 100 on ACR are 4.03, but my expected BB per 100 is 7.9. And then I was kind of looking over like what Daryl Jase was saying about like, uh, how am I from each position? You know, what's, what's your expected and what's, what's your actual? In the small blind, I'm minus 20. In the big blind, I'm minus 48. And then in early position, I'm, let's see, and this is big blinds greater than 300. So this is, uh, this is deeper. Early position, I'm three big blinds, middle position, I'm 11, cutoff, I'm 22, and button, I'm 22. I feel like the button should be a little bit higher. Like what's, what's a good pro number to, for BBs per 100 on the, on the button? Do you know?
I don't. I mean, like, I can look it up. Although Steve, I should say, uh, those numbers are pretty high, four and a half. I mean, it's less than this is expected, but, I know like discussing, uh, you know, ACR with Mark, it was like, I mean, it's a massive discrepancy for me and like everybody he coaches and backs, it's the same thing. Like ACR, or like, you know, I'm only like one and a half big blinds per 100 on ACR, but probably nine, but probably nine, nine big blinds on.
Ignition or?
Yeah, ignition. Um, so yeah, I don't know. That's, that's pretty good. That's what you're doing. So.
Well, um, I'm looking through some other ones here and I think, okay, so like from, I'm looking by stack size now. And, um, stack size from zero to 10 big blinds, I'm .48, but expected 3.4. 11 to 15, that used to be pretty bad, but I think it's getting better is, uh, BBs per 100 are minus point five, but expected is 5.5. And the variance is a bitch, man. And, uh, then 16 to 25, I'm two, expected is four. Uh, 26 to 40 is four, expected is five and a half. And it looks like a lot of my, well, these are such small sample sizes, I don't even think you can count those.
Yeah, I'm not the HUD Meister for sure. I would not know how to look at a database and know what, um, you know, if you could see any leaks from there. What's your VPip to pre-flop raise to three bet numbers?
Uh, let's see, VPip, uh, 25.8, PFR 18.1, three bet 7.9.
Wow, those are some really high numbers. Um, yeah.
Think I'm three betting a little too much?
You make me look like a gutless nit. No, I mean, again, I don't know what these stats mean. I'm a 20, 16, uh, nine.
Really? You're, you're tighter than I am?
Well, I'm opening less pots.
You're opening less pots, but you're three betting a little more.
Three betting, those hands that I'm in are, uh, yeah, are going, are, um, are, I guess are more likely to be three bet. Yeah, I don't know, Steve. Like I said, it might be time for you to do a, uh, Mark is of course, he loves, Mark loves looking at, uh, databases and all that kind of stuff too. So you might, uh, hire him for a, uh, double dose coaching session, one to do, I mean, I don't know if you saw, there's a TPE training series where it was just that, where it was Mark going in depth into KB's HUD stats, all those saved hands and trying to see, you know, analyze it from that level. So.
I haven't seen that one. I gotta watch that one.
I'm sorry?
I haven't seen that one. I gotta watch that one. I'm on the, uh, the Matt, uh, the ginger one right now, the swordfish, uh, one that he, that he shipped.
Okay. Yeah, I haven't, I haven't been watching a lot of videos from there. Um, yeah. So like I said, Steve, I, I don't really know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know what to look on this. I know, um, yeah, I don't know, like the first, uh, raise first in late position, like in ignition, I needed to get that number up. You know, that was something I was told, so I did that. But, uh, yeah, overall it just says, I'm just five and a half big blinds per 100. So like I said, uh, which is probably makes sense because it's very low on ACR. And it's pretty high on ignition. So five and a half would make sense.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Well, when, uh, you're, you're getting ready to head out to, uh, the WSOP here pretty soon. The 28th, right, is when you're going out?
Yeah, I'm going early to play a couple of Venetian events. I'm busy hustling, getting all the, uh, all my money from the people who are backing me. And it's looks like we're meeting expectations here. I've sold 40% of, uh, package A, which was what I was aiming for. And 50%, 54% of B. So just get that money and go out there and, um, like I said, Steve, this is, not that this is new territory for me, but this is like the, the third summer in a row where I just really don't have money for Vegas. And the last two have gotten lucky just by, you know, getting a big score early and run around, run around town like a baller. I gotta, I gotta prepare myself mentally for, because I, I do not personally have money to pay for my buy-ins that I've set aside. So, you know, if I brick the first, you know, 16 events, it's, I give everyone their money back and play one, three at the win.
Yeah.
For the second, the second, or I could try to sell, you know, 90% of myself.
Might as well, man. Sell as much as you can and play all these events, you know?
Yeah.
What, uh, how's your, um, how much have you sold for C, D and E packages?
Um, I'd have to look it up. I think, uh, somewhere between 20 and 35% for the three of them.
Perfect.
The problem is if you want, I mean, I don't know if you could, we could actually, you know, try to do the math and break it down the hourly, but, uh, I mean, I guess the good, obviously if I were to sell 90% of myself, then I'm at, uh, at 1.2 or 1.15, whatever it is, that I'm, I'm free rolling.
Yeah.
I'm actually, I've actually already locked some money up if there's $30,000 and I'm at 1.2 selling, you know, so I get, uh, 8% to the buy. So I would make 2,400 and then everything else that I, you know, 10% of cashes. But like I said, if I played 50,000 in tournaments, and let's just say for the sake that I, I would, uh, cash for 100,000.
Yeah.
Then 10% of that is 5,000. But plus, plus you'd have to take the rake. So you're talking about, I would make seven or 8,000, which isn't bad for two months out there, I guess.
No, that's a, that's a good bidding.
Well, that's less, that's less than the mailman makes for six weeks.
Yeah, but you're also getting to play a game for two months and you get 3,500 bucks a month. That's not bad. You know, with the chance of binking something and, and getting really big.
Well, for me, it wouldn't really be big if I got only a 10%. That's, that's the other issue there. So I'm trying to, like I said, I told Alex, I, I feel I'm destined for one big score. Like when I say big, I mean like, you know, 250K plus.
I hope so, dude. I hope so. I'm excited, Ben. I, I can't wait. I'm gonna be following you on a Twitter railing. I'm leaving for my vacation here pretty soon. I'd, we're recording the 22nd and this isn't going to come out until I think the 28th, maybe 29th.
Yeah, hopefully, you know, if I'm playing that many tournaments, I should be given some good sweats at the very least.
Yeah.
If I, I think, I don't know how many tournaments I have. I think it's like 28 tournaments. So, you know, I'm supposed to be cashing, um, 15% of that, whatever the hell that is, uh, that doesn't really sound like a lot, just, 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 uh, four and a half tournaments or whatever, four tournaments, but hopefully.
All it takes is one good one.
Yeah, hopefully.
You know, out of 30 tournaments, you just gotta run deep in one. That's it.
Yeah, like I said, they'll probably cash hopefully in like six of them. And like two or three of them will get down to the final 50 and, uh, you know, I'll have to win a flip. And if I do that, I'll make the final couple of tables and then, you know, blah, blah, blah. So.
Cool, cool. I'm gonna be heading out before this podcast airs and I'll be down in Honduras with my buddy. And we're gonna be hopping around the islands and going to the beaches and stuff. And then after that, we're heading up to Belize where I'm meeting up with another buddy. And, uh, then I'll be there for a couple of days, come home, unpack, repack, and then go out to the WSOP. So I'll be meeting you out there the 20th in basically a month. And, uh, yeah, I'm excited. It's gonna be you, me, Alex, and then two of his buddies right in the house.
Yeah, he's got three. I have to, uh, we'll have to figure that out, Steve, because I'm, I might be sleeping, uh, you know, we'll have to maybe charge next to nothing if people are sleeping on couches or we're gonna have to, like Alex's, I didn't really look at the, that room, that house only has four beds. Like a lot of the four bedroom houses we were looking at had rooms that had like two beds in them.
Okay.
So this one I think like has a couple of pullout couches. So I, you know, I don't know. You, you can stay there for, for, for sure, Steve. The one guy's like, we shouldn't rent any rooms till we get there and look at it. And I said, well, I already promised my friend Steve, so we'll have to, you know. But, um, yeah, it's a nice, beautiful house. It's just we'll have to figure out the sleeping arrangements because like I said.
What, uh, who, who, they paid for it already, right? It's booked? Okay, who, who paid for it? Alex?
I know, his friend.
Okay, so maybe I can get in touch with Alex and figure out where to send the chick?
Uh, yeah, like I said, wait till, just, just probably cash when you show up is, is fine, but we'll have to, uh,
Okay.
Well, these, these guys are gonna decide, you know, how many people can stay there and da, da, da. So, you know, I didn't even, I didn't even see the part, a lot of that house. I just walked into the kitchen and the, the room, the, you know, the, uh, the family room area and of course the back room pool. So I don't know what the rest of it looks like. It looks like there's some sort of like pool room that has a couple of couches that are probably like pullout. So, man.
Yeah, I was looking at that. When we went there, because this, this is the, the house that Derek and Mark and those guys rented last year and I only spent time in the kitchen when I was going to get a beer and then out back, the pool is beautiful and then the family room. And that's, that's about all I saw. I might've taken a leak once in the bathroom, but that, that was, uh, I didn't, I didn't go back and see the bedrooms or anything. And that game room, I have no memory of that. I don't know, I don't even know where that one is.
Yeah. Well, there's stairs going upstairs and, uh, you know, upstairs is I guess where they have, uh, anyways, there's four bedrooms, but they all have just one, there's, they all have one bed in it. And I don't know if we're gonna need air mattress or people sleep on the couch or how this will affect what, you know, we charge people. But right after we got the house and, you know, I think, um, you know, the people saw the pictures of it, everyone, now a bunch of people want to stay there, which is great. But frankly, I think there's different financial situations between me and everyone else in the house. Like, I don't care, stuff him in there. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I'm paying.
This closet's kind of big. This'll work.
Well, I really had like a thousand dollars budgeted for like the summer housing is what I had in my mind. And, uh, this is, yeah, this is a lot more. So I, I said, listen, we not, we need to, we need at least to get, uh, you know, 40, 40 other, 40 people and 40 nights of other guests, some, some people and, uh, you know, charge them 75 bucks, 75 bucks a night. There's 3,000 and we all get 750 back was what I was trying to. But I don't know. We'll see, Steve.
Okay, okay. Well, worst case scenario, but I mean, you know, I could rent it if, uh, if it's too much or something, we could get an Airbnb little apartment or something for a week. I'd, I'd love to stay here though. This place looks awesome.
Yeah.
Did Murph contact you about staying there?
Who?
Murph from the, um, Post Flat Poker Podcast? He sent me a message on Twitter and I wasn't sure if, he said he'll be out there and it was like right after I said that, that you and I were staying with Alex in that, uh, in the old TPE house. So I wasn't sure if he meant that he was staying with us or he's just gonna be out there during that time.
Uh, I don't think he's staying with us. No, I don't know. I don't know anyone named Murph in this little, this little group.
Okay, okay. Yeah, he's a, anyways, right on. Cool, cool. Well, I got, uh, I got a few, uh, strategy hands here.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, this, uh, strategy hand is brought to you by Tournament Poker Edge. Let's get better at these things called tournaments that we all know and love so much. Join us at TPE. You can guess along and hope you get lucky, or you can stack the deck in your favor, watch the videos, form study groups with other members and the pros, and know the correct play. I can't talk enough about Andrew's videos on there. He has oodles of videos on there about hand reading, continuation bets, playing the big blind, value betting, getting your bets called, getting folds on your bluffs. It's all there at tournamentpokeredge.com. Try the free videos. You can ghost the forums for free. It doesn't cost anything. You get to try it. When you do join, use the code HUPMONTH, HUPQUARTER, or HUPYEAR. SYSC, man, save yourself some cash. Study and learn with other people that are just like us. TournamentPokerEdge.com.
No one's just like you, Steve.
I am a special snooker.
There's a dime a dozen of Snookermans out there, but there's only one Barton. Let's be honest. Can I ask you specifically? I want to go back because I was, I make fun of the, uh, how many vacation days a year do you, paid vacation days a year do you get?
Paid vacation? Uh, I get,
30?
Well, let's see. I get, uh, 15 hours every two weeks. So what's 15 times 26?
So that would be, that would be, uh, basically 26 vacation days a year essentially. Every two.
Uh, no, 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 not, not that many. Um.
Well, if every two weeks you get seven hours.
Do the math here. 390 hours. So what's 390 divided by 24? Because each shift is 24 hours.
But you said you get every 24 hours, you get every two weeks, you get seven and a half hours. So 26, 26 times.
No, every, every two weeks I get 15 hours.
Every two weeks?
15 times 26 divided by 24. I get 16 days a year.
How are you, you said you get seven hours every two weeks? Or 15?
I get 15 hours every two weeks.
Well, Steve, that's seven and a half hours a week times, so 390 divided by eight is almost 50 vacation days, pretty much. If you're, if you're counting a day as, as eight hours.
Well, a, a day in the life of a fireman is 24 hours. Cause we go to work at seven and we don't get off work until 7:00 AM the next morning. So.
So if you're gone for a week, a full week, let's say five days, you're using 120 hours of your vacation time. Is that the essence of it?
Pretty much. It, it basically, the way our shifts go is we've got three shifts and they're, they're 24 hours each. So if you think of the schedule as you work 24 hours on and then you get 48 hours on.
Part I understand. So if you're talking, when you, so when you take a vacation day, you're getting paid for five full days. So basically you're using 120 hours of your vacation time every time you leave.
Yes.
Okay. Um, it feels like.
Yeah. If, if you, if you, if you want one day off, you gotta burn 24 hours of vacation, which takes about, what is that, three, three and a half weeks to.
It seems like you're off like a good seven or eight weeks a, a year at least, but no.
That's pretty accurate. Yeah. The, the other part that, that, that most of my time comes off from actually is doing shift trades. So let's say you're, um, you're working on engine three and I'm working on engine eight. I'll say, I'll work this Saturday for you and you work this one day in June for me. And I do that throughout the year and I get about, I think right now I've got like 10 in the books, 10 shift trades where I've already worked for the guys they now owe me. And they're gonna be working for me while I'm in Honduras and out at the WSOP. And then when I come back, I'll start the process over again and I'll start working a bunch of shift trades so I can build them up and then take them off at the same time. So my, my time and my schedule kind of goes in blocks, you know, it's like weeks at a time. Like I'll work in, in seven days, I'll be at work for, you know, 144 hours. And then I've got like three or four days off in a row. And I usually try to time that with my wife. And, uh, and then I go back to work and I work like three days in a row, get one day off, work two days in a row, and then have another four days off like that. So I, I built, you know, when I go to work, I'm basically in work mode for like a week and then I get a block of days off and then
I got you.
Once or twice a year, then I take a whole chunk of it together, you know?
Okay. I was just, I was curious, Steve, how, how fat is your job anyways? You know, but, uh, yeah.
This is one of the reasons I love being a fireman is because you could just, it's not like when I come back, all of a sudden there's a bunch of paperwork on my desk that, you know, I, I've been missing. I mean, there is a tiny bit of that now that I've promoted, but you know, for the majority of the time, they don't care who's there. They just need a body, you know? And whether you work, you know, 300 hours one month and then, you know, only 50 hours the next month, they don't care as long as someone's there in that spot. They can't close the station. Somebody has to be there, you know? So I just schedule it ahead of time and it works out great for me.
Beautiful stuff, Steve.
All right, let's see here. Uh, okay, okay. This one is from a tournament, uh, yesterday that I played actually. We are at the table in the big blind.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, we've got 50 big blinds. We've got 50 big blinds and the blind levels are 100, 200, uh, with a small ante. It looks like a $20 ante. So 100, 200, 20 ante. Total pot is 480. We're in the big blind. And it folds around to the, uh, button three. So after the cutoff and hijack, this guy min raises. And so he makes it 400. His numbers are 18, 12, 3.7 after 62 hands. Uh, so semi-tight. Um, then we get a call on the button. After 87 hands, this guy is a 16, 7, 0. So this guy's pretty tight. Small blind folds and then it's on us in the big blind. Uh, total pot right now is 1280 and we have ace, eight offsuit. The original opener has 46 bigs. The button caller has 74 bigs and we've got 50.
Um, so it's a definite call, right? We're getting the right price?
Oh yeah, definite call. Is there an argument here for three betting or? I, I think with, with the numbers that these guys got, 18, 12, and then 16, 7, I don't, we do have an ace blocker, but I, I don't like this spot for, uh, for three betting, do you?
Um, I would think I like it more if the stacks were a little smaller is my, because, yeah, you know, ace eight's kind of a, a blah hand. Although,
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been thinking about that. I think a few times I've discussed it, like that I'm pretty nitty early, where some of these guys would step on the gas from the beginning. Um, maybe have an edge. Um, but here I'm just like, okay, it doesn't cost me much. I can complete if I miss, you know, move on to the next hand.
Yeah, we're getting more, more than six to one. We, uh, yeah, okay. I think the same thing. I flick in a call. Total pot is 480. Again, we've got ace, eight offsuit in the big blind. We had a middle position opener, a button call, and then we complete in the big blind. So we go to the flop. The flop is king of spades, king of clubs, eight of clubs. We do not have a club. And the action's on us.
I'm sorry, king, eight. What was the other one?
King, king, eight, two clubs.
Um, probably check calling one street. I don't, I don't know if that's right. That's my first instinct though. Like I guess you, or, um, or you can check raise and rep that king and hopefully get them to fold those pocket nines.
Okay. Are you ever leading here?
Um, how, how big, what's the buy-in in this tournament?
Uh, you know, it doesn't say on my replayer, but it's gotta be between 15 and 30. That's what I was playing.
Yeah, I'm tempted to say it a better, like the higher stakes anyways. People are not gonna fold very often to that bet. Um, then you're gonna be a lot, tough spot on the turn. But, uh, and yeah, but I, I would be leading with the king here. So I guess for, you would play a king that way. It's not implausible. Although at that level, they might find it implausible. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I feel like on this board, king, king, eight, two clubs. I, I, I think I would lead here with like, um, small flushes, uh, a king or small flush draws, uh, a king. Hmm. Maybe like Broadway clubs too? Something like queen jacket clubs? I'm leaning with all flush draws or?
In this exact spot, there's a lot of times, Steve, especially here, you got two tight opponents. I'm just check folding actually.
Okay.
To any c bet, because you know, what do you do on the turn? Here, here's again a HUD question. If you had a lot of hunt, you know, had a lot of hands on the guy, you could, uh, you could see their double barrel, double barrel frequency. Or their c bet, if their c bet is pretty low, I'm gonna fold here. Um, I just hate spots like this.
Yeah, okay.
At a position where you could potentially be drawing dead to everything but running aces.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So which only is gonna happen one out of every.
Not enough times.
Only gonna happen one out of every 330 times right now. So that's my first instinct.
Okay. I check, um, the original opener checks and the button checks. So we go to the turn. We've got ace, eight offsuit and the board was king, king, eight, two clubs. And the turn comes the three of diamonds. So an offsuit three. Um, actions on us. 1480 in the pot. We got 9,500 behind. We got 50 bigs, 46 bigs and the button has 74.
Um, yeah, I hate that folding in this spot. You know what I mean? Depending on if, if those guys are capable of making a move. But, uh, yeah, I don't mind, I mind a little, a little bet here. 575 or something.
Okay, okay. And the 1480, just like a little.
You can get called by worse.
Um, yeah.
I don't know.
Draws, flush draws, a three maybe?
Yeah. I don't know if you, I don't know if you're gonna get any better to fold.
Yeah, because nines through queens are calling for sure. But, okay, maybe a worse eight. All right. Uh, I lead out and to 1480, I make it 666. The devil. Uh, I make it 666. The original opener, he calls and the button folds. He calls and the button folds.
Okay.
So we go to the river. The pot is now twenty eight, twelve. Uh, we've got eighty eight hundred behind. Um, and the original opener has about eight K behind, so effective stacks are eight K. And the river is the nine and offsuit nine. So the final board here is king, king, eight. The turn is a three and the river is the nine. Uh, the flush draw did not come in. We've got ace, eight for, what is it, third pair?
Yep.
What are you thinking here?
Um. Yeah, I don't know. Uh.
Is it, is it a check call? Is it a check fold? Is it a? Is it a bet fold?
I don't think I could check fold unless it's if the sizing. Yeah, check folding. Um. Yeah, I mean, you definitely could have tens or jacks here and be betting the river. There's spots like this where I'm like, let's throw a little blocker out there um, slash value and hope he doesn't uh, you know, it's second or third pair. And then the guy calls you with like in a spot exactly like this with like jacks. And you're like, you know, this villain probably would have just checked behind. I could have saved myself money. But I think you can still get called by worse here. I think if you're getting called by any pair, I mean, I don't know. This is one of those things you could press it in the equity calculator. Of of his range that calls you on the turn. What percentage are you ahead of, you think?
Yeah, is on the turn, I think he's gonna call with sevens, sixes, fives, maybe fours. Uh, cause in his mind, he's beating a flush draw.
Maybe he does have some flush draws.
He could have a worse eight. But he's definitely calling the river with tens, jacks and queens.
And his kings, obviously. We we can't, we can't cap his range here. He could have kings or uh, pocket nines.
Yeah, or even aces.
Um. I think bet fold or check call are my my two choices. I don't know which one I like more.
Okay, into twenty eight hundred. If you're gonna bet here, what's your sizing?
Um. Pretty small. Nine seventy five or something.
Hmm.
You're trying to get looked up by ace high, pretty small, you know?
Okay, okay. I bet uh, nine, nine, nine. And villain calls. And we don't get to see his hand, but we win. So I'm trying to think of what he would have called there with. And the only thing that really makes sense to me is a worse eight, like if he had like ten, eight or jack, eight or something like that, maybe?
Um, and uh, ace, ten plus.
Okay, you think he's calling there with ace high on that?
I think I would. Probably, you know, so again, it's good, it's good. That'd be, there's a good argument there for some balanced going for thin value right there, cause a lot of people probably, especially at the lower buy-ins are like, well, he's either got a king, he's either got a king or nothing here.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So ace high or 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 pairs.
Okay, right after I made this bet, I was like, am I doing this for value? Is this a blocker bet or a combination of both? But betting like a third pot on the river just felt right. And then when he called, I'm like, oh, I'm never good here. And then I won the pot and I'm like, okay, I guess he didn't have jacks. But uh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, um, of those combinations on the turn that you're ahead of his aces, his, you know, his uh, his flush draws, his smaller pairs and his ace size. Usually you're not, I would think two thirds of those combinations by the river are folding.
Okay.
That don't, that don't improve. Um, maybe not even that much, maybe not that high. But um, yeah, I I think it was about, it was it was the proper play, the value bet there.
Okay. Alrighty, right on. I've got another one. Uh, this, I actually made it to a final table yesterday. Unfortunately, it was uh, it was my little uh, eleven dollar session saver down in the corner that I ended up playing for three hours. Saved the uh, saved the Sunday, but uh, uh, this one is uh, got a flush draw. Okay, so we're deep in this tournament. Um, actually first, let me give you a shout out for Elliot Rowe. Yes. Do not play a hand of poker unless you listen to that man's voice first. Meditation tapes just before you play. Get in the right mindset so that you can focus on poker. Listen to an MP three before you play. You put it on your phone, your computer, your tablet. He has MP threes for everything. Before this session yesterday, I listened to his final table focus. MP three for MTTs and lo and behold, here I am at a final table. Okay, get in the right mindset. He's got them for everything. Online cash, online tournaments, live cash, live tournaments. He's got a leak buster. Maybe you need to play more, so the simple volume system might be for you. Try it for free. It doesn't, you don't have to put in a credit card. You don't have to try nothing. Just it's free. Just click on the link in the show notes and you'll get his seven minute tilt buster. Use the code H U poker when you do buy one and score yourself a little discount. You'll find the link in the show notes. H U poker. Okay, here we are. We are in the small blind with eight deuce of clubs. Uh, we're three handed. And the button folds who has thirteen big blinds. We have thirty five big blinds in the small blind and the big blind has twenty four big blinds.
Okay.
So the total pot right now is fifteen hundred. We've got twenty seven K. He has eighteen K. Um, so effective stacks are eighteen K and we got eight deuce of clubs in the small blind. Are you completing here? Are you just dumping it or?
Um, I don't know, probably dumping or, yeah, probably dumping.
Okay, I went for, I I did the call. Looking at this now, maybe you're right. Maybe this is a fold when we've got the button who has only thirteen bigs. And it's just not worth being out of position with such a shitty hand. The the crossover for me here was the fact that it was suited. I call four hundred into a pot of fifteen.
Um, but you got someone acting behind you too is the bigger issue here.
What do you mean?
You're in the small blind?
Oh, you you mean the big blinds left to act, yeah.
Um, yeah, I definitely, especially against that stack size. If you're gonna call here, I'm probably gonna be like donking every flop pretty much.
Okay.
Just leading out for calling and then leading out like seventy, seventy, seventy five percent pot on on pretty much every flop.
Okay, all right. That sounds like a strategy I employ. Uh, okay, I call. The big blind checks behind. And we got a pot of nineteen hundred now. Effective stacks are eighteen K. And with eight deuce of clubs, the flop comes ace of clubs, four of clubs, four spades. So
Okay.
Sticking with our plan, uh, into nineteen hundred, I bet uh, one, two, two, two. So about two thirds pot, something like that.
Makes sense.
Okay, and the big blind calls.
That sucks.
Yeah, it would have been a lot nicer to take the pot down here. Okay, he calls. The pot is now forty three hundred. Effective stacks behind are sixteen, eight, so we've got about a four to one stacked pot ratio. And the turn is the queen of diamonds. So the board now is ace of clubs, four clubs, four spades. And the turn is the queen of diamonds. We have the eight deuce of clubs for a flush draw. Um, are you, what are you, what are you doing on the turn here?
Um. Yeah, I don't know if you wanna bet small to hopefully not, you know, buy buy showdown and be able to re- realize your equity. Um, I feel like he's never, the that card doesn't really change the board.
Yeah.
Like what, what, what are we putting him on for a calling range on the flop? Is he, is he ever floating here just to steal it away? Just to steal it. We agree he's never folding an ace here, right? Or?
I don't think he could ever fold an ace, no.
So the betting again would do would, what would it accomplish? I guess, I I guess he would. If for some reason he didn't, he just flatted sixes, you know, fives through nines, just cause he wanted to see a flop first. That's, those are the only hands I can see him folding if we pers- keep, continue betting here, but I don't know. I mean, I guess if you wanted to pot it here, you would be pricing him out of his flush draw if he has a flush draw.
Oh, okay. I didn't think of that, yeah, but he's, yeah, he's never folding an ace there. He might not even fold a queen if he picked that up on the turn.
I might be check folding here.
Okay.
That's, that's my, that's my first instinct. Not that it's rational, but in spots like this, I'm often like, you know what? I shouldn't have played this dumbass hand in the first place. Let's just get out with it.
Why didn't I fold pre-flop? Yeah, I I was kind of on the same mindset on the turn here. I thought, okay, queen, um, not liking that card. Um, it uh, I I I, my plan was to uh, check fold here. Uh, so I check and villain checks behind.
Okay.
Okay, so we go to the river and the river is the king of clubs. So our flush comes in. Uh, we've got eight deuce of clubs and the flop was ace of clubs, four of clubs, four spades. Turn was queen of diamonds. River was king of clubs. Um, what uh, into forty three hundred? What are you doing here?
Well, let's just talk about his range here. What does he, is he checking behind aces on the turn? He he might still be just ju- just pot controlling, just in case, first of all, it's a final table and so just, well, just in case this guy has a four. Um, I'm just gonna check behind here. Um, of course, the flush draws, he would still, he would, he might, he's gonna be checking behind a certain amount of time. Um, I mean, I think it's an obvious, you gotta bet here. It it's an ugly spot if he shoves over you, but.
Okay, what um, what's your sizing into forty three hundred?
Um.
We're trying to get, we're trying to get value from a four, from an ace. A queen or a king, right? He might be folding a ki- a queen.
Yeah, he doesn't have uh, he doesn't have too many queens, which um, make it to the river unless he, it was um, that unless it was with a flush draw, which of course will be bad news for you here. I'm I'm gonna bet like fifteen sixty six or something.
Oh, you're going real small. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I I guess if we're only get calling by by an ace or a four, then it should be kind of indifferent to size maybe. So maybe you should be going sixty five, seventy percent. Um, I'm trying to think. Yeah, maybe, maybe you should be going twenty nine, thirty three here or something.
Okay, I I I went a little bigger. I went twenty six, sixty six. Uh, okay, into forty three hundred. So I make it a little bit bigger. And then villain shoves.
Yeah, we saw that coming.
Wouldn't be much of a hand history if he didn't, right?
I don't, how many chips now? What kind of price are you getting here to call off?
Uh, let's see, there's twenty three hundred, let's see. Back this up here. Okay, uh, when I bet, the pot is seven K. And he shoves seventeen hundred, seventeen K.
Although there's only forty six hundred in the pot. You you make it seven thousand and how many chips does he have left when he shoves?
Oh, no, no, no. The pot is forty three hundred. I bet essentially twenty seven hundred, bringing the pot total to seven thousand. Now, he's got seventeen K behind and he ships it.
Yeah, but and and you have, you have, you have, you guys have the same stack size or?
I I've got him covered. I've got twenty three K behind. He's got seventeen. So we're not busting this hand.
Well, you gotta, you gotta call eleven to win twenty four. So you only have to be right um, less than one third of the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know. Yeah, I I guess you have to put him on a four and he just um, was gonna shove over you on any river maybe. But um, yeah, if he's, if he's not betting the turn. I mean, flush draw makes, is the only thing that makes sense here, really. You're getting such a good price. You just wonder, is this guy ever uh, just sort of half, just betting, just jamming the four and hoping you have an ace. But when checked to on the turn with the flush draw out there, he should always be betting a four.
I would think so.
So it looks like a flush. Um, I would have trouble finding a fold, but it's probably the right play here.
Yeah, okay. I I I almost timed out on this one. I didn't know what the right move was, but I I was like, I got, I think the tipping point for me probably should have been the paired board. If the board wasn't paired, I don't think, there's no way I could, I could fold this. Uh, and I think it'd probably be wrong to fold it, but with the paired board, that might just tip it in the direction of a fold.
Right, he might have had uh, he might have had ace, four, king, four, whatever, and uh.
Yeah, yeah, I think that should have been the tipping point. I uh, I end up uh, calling it off and he had queen four. Uh, for the, he he turned about. So that was a bummer.
I think it's a bet fold. I was gonna say that when we were discussing bet sizing. Well, let's make it clear here. Are we folding if he shoves? And uh, yeah, I don't think he's shoving worse very often.
I don't think so either after reviewing this. I, at the time I was thinking, well, maybe he backdoored into jack ten for the straight. And, you know, three handed, you know, a club coming on the river, like there's no way he's getting away from that. Would he be doing this with a four? Since he checked his big blind, I think a lot of the fours that he could have, you know, any four in his range. Um.
How much should you, what was your donk bet on the flop relative to the pot?
About two thirds.
Yeah, then he's, he's never floating with like ten, jack on that kind of, if you bet real small maybe, but um, he's never, he's not, never floating there, especially with a player behind him to act. So it's, it's a four, an ace.
Well, there's no one behind him. We're just, we're just heads up here.
Oh, the, the button, the button, uh, I thought the button bet in this hand.
No, no, the button folded. We limped the small blind. He checked his big blind and then we went to the.
I'm sorry, yeah, I I I kinda missed that. Yeah, so yeah, you're limp, you're calling, which was fine. Um. Yeah, Steve, I mean, from, if we start doing the little uh, hand reading from the beginning, what does he call on the flop with? Yeah, I guess he is then floating with with nothing sometimes. Um. And uh, but he's mostly calling with just aces, fours and flush draws.
Yeah.
And by the river, he's probably not um, he's not shoving over you with just an ace ever. And you can't beat any of his flushes or his um, full houses, obviously. So yeah, it's a fold.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know what price I'd need to be getting here just to find a fold there.
I don't know. I couldn't find one.
So he's bet, are you beat? But here, I mean, I think I would wanna be getting like five or six to one to be like, okay, let's just, maybe some, sometimes he just has a damn four or he's just some people have just decided at the beginning of the hand, I'm just gonna rep it this, this hand.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna call and if he bet, if, and, you know, call one and he bets, I shove, but uh, yeah, I like a fold on the river. Actually, the more I think about it, I really think, yeah, it's a must fold.
Yeah, me too, me too. I think that was a bet fold. That was a mistake.
Did you finish third?
I finished third, yeah. That that wiped me down to almost nothing and then I was out like two hands later. But I think that's another argument for folding there too, is you've got an, you've got a guy with thirteen bigs. You know, in here, we could fold and still have uh, uh, over twenty big blinds. It, I think it's just a, just dump it for ICM alone, you know?
Yeah, on my to do list is to study heads up. I know you you're kinda have a lot of heads up background. But um, you know, I like from the small blind raising a lot of times, you know, big a lot of times, two point eight to three point two X. And um, I know Ben is like, has a very heavy limp, heavy strategy, which you do as well.
Yeah.
So, and Mark made the point, if I study heads up, there's a lot of, you know, you play a lot of blind versus blind hands. So that's what that essentially was, is a good training for, not just running deep in tournaments, but.
Oh, that and all the times your heads up, uh, you know, most of the time when you raise and you get a call from uh, you know, the button and then everyone else folds, your, your head's up there, you know? Uh, most of your play, when you play uh, no limit hold him is is heads up.
Yeah, I'm just saying in these spots though, when you're, both of you have such a wide range, it's just a different situation, you know?
Yeah. Right on, cool. Well, um, let's go ahead and wrap it up, Mikey. I uh, I guess the next time uh, we'll probably be talking, we'll be uh, out at the WSOP.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it, man. It's gonna be fun. It's gonna be fun.
Stevie. Alrighty, brother. Back to bed for me here.
Okay, you get a good night's sleep and you guys can follow me on Twitter at H U P podcast. You can follow Mike at Mike Snyderman or watch him play on Twitch, twitch.tv slash Rampage Poker. Thank you for tuning in and here is your weekly motivational speech. That the reason I'm here is I dreamed big dreams. I dreamed the kind of dreams that other people said would not be possible. I'm also living proof. This isn't a Hollywood movie. I come literally from the other side of the tracks. If you saw where I grew up and we took a picture of it, the neighborhood, the setting. You'd say it's not, it's impossible that someone could come from there and get here. But it is possible. But it is possible. And not to sound too trite, if you dream big and surround yourself with great people and leave your ego at the door and share success with others. And have a little luck along the way. You can do anything. But there will be people along the way, and I remember this, who will say to you, you know, you're dreaming too big. It's not possible. Those things just can't happen. Don't allow anyone. Friend, family, acquaintance, teachers, whoever it is. Don't allow anyone to tell you that what you are dreaming for yourself and your family is not possible. It is possible. Don't be one of those people 20 years from now are going to be walking around in a nine to five job miserable and angry and bitter. Because you let your dreams get away from you. Because you did not believe strongly enough in yourself and what was possible. Don't allow that to happen. And I, I can't encourage you enough to continue to think that things are possible and that your dreams can come true.